Phyllis from New Year's, so have these Bob and Tom.
Right. Call to order, a meeting of the Planning Commission, Town of Superior, for, let's say, March 15th. Roll call?
TV's not on.
Someone's supposed to be rolling cameras?
Make sure it counts.
They're rolling back there, but not out here. That's what I'm looking at, I don't see any red lights or anything. It's probably something Phyllis does, right?
We are clearly helpless.
We got a signal?
Yeah, alright, we're good.
But not hopeless.
Is that not working?
Well, one is, you have to kind of jump up there and turn that on.
Hey, he's got it.
Alright, roll call?
Alright, yep.
Chairman, John Craig Craft, absent.
Absent.
Vice Chairman Craig Prestesider.
Here.
Commissioners Joan Eaton.
Here.
Ian Albertson.
Here.
Clint Folsom.
Here.
Phyllis Harden, absent. Bob McCool, absent. Rochelle Rittmuster.
Here.
Tom Ricker.
Here.
Magley, town manager, he's on the list, we know he's not here. And Attorney would be Christine Stratesky, is here. Planner Fred Fox, it's me, I'm here.
Okay, thank you. At this time, if anybody in the public wants to come forward and comment on consent agenda and non-agenda items, come forward. Not seeing anybody? Alright, so now we move to consent agenda, approval of the March 1st, 2011 minutes. I was not here for that meeting, so anybody?
I still move.
Okay, got a motion and a second on approving the March 1st minutes. I'll say, I'll take a vote, everybody in favor? Okay, approved. Okay, moving right on to a public hearing regarding an ordinance to repeal and reenact section 16330 of Superior Municipal Court Code on mobile homes. Is there proof of publication?
There is.
Fred's got proof of publication. Does the applicant have a presentation?
Yeah, the applicant actually is, is the town.
Okay.
Acting on a request from Mr. George Cuffner. So, what I'll do is just sort of summarize the staff report a little bit, and then Christine can review the ordinance, the actual ordinance itself with you. I also put on your desks a copy of the staff report. Item number two went so far as to say there was a total of four homes, and they did list what they were, there was a colon, but there was nothing there.
Right.
So, Phyllis added that in, and that's sort of a new and improved staff report. Okay, and I'll go through those. Basically, the issue is a request by a resident, Mr. George Cuffner, who has asked that he, they have the ability, people who have mobile home in Superior on lots that are either in RM or RL zone, that are currently non-conforming uses, to be allowed to replace those with similar, well, with newer mobile homes as these age and basically become fundamentally worn out. And so, we've had a discussion up there about this, and this is a public hearing on the actual ordinance itself. There were, in the ordinance that Christine will review, the fundamental elements in it is that the town has gone ahead and developed this ordinance where, number one, the replacement mobile home fits on an existing pad, these are some of the elements of the ordinance. Number two, it's certified that a national manufactured housing construction is safety standard acts of 1974, so that's normally, then, a mobile home is probably manufactured, obviously, after that, would have, or should have, a tag on it. There must be applied for as a building permit, and then the sections of the code that relate to tie-downs and so on will, will be reviewed by the billing department. And it complies with section 16.29-10 of, Part 4 and 5 of our existing land use code. And then, the mobile home that's being replaced is removed from the property within 30 days. In our discussions, there were, the last meeting, there were several questions that were brought up by the Planning Commission. And I'll just, I'll review these, probably read these, because it, there's a lot of information here. Number one, it was asked, can the town include a sunset provision where eventually legal non-conforming mobile homes would be required to be replaced on a permanent foundation and meet all the provisions of the code? And the answer to that is, it's possible, however, it would apply to any property owner with a legal non-conforming use, and for that reason, staff is recommending against adding this language. Number two, how many property owners have replaced a mobile home with a new home and placed it on a permanent foundation that meets the current code requirements? And there's a list there of four of them, basically in original Superior. So, we got four people have done that. Number three, how would this apply to properties that have more than one mobile home on a lot? Properties with multiple mobile homes on a lot are already legally non-conforming, so as long as the new mobile home meets the proposed language of the new section, they will continue to be illegal, non-conforming use. Number four, could approvals be granted on a case-by-case basis? Feeling there is, by staff, is this would be considered a variance in the code, already has procedures in place for this type of review. Number five, what are surrounding municipality standards regarding mobile homes? And we attached a chart there, giving some idea of what's going on. Basically, you know, mobile homes are fundamentally in a lot of the jurisdictions in mobile home parks. And they're not necessarily allowed unless they're there already in, in standard building districts. In general, that's what's going on, and there's a variety of jurisdictions there. Number six, could someone legally sell a mobile home that doesn't meet the federal standards? Mobile homes meeting the federal standards have a tag affixed to them stating that the standards are met. The town's ordinance would make it illegal to replace illegal non-conforming mobile home with a mobile home that does not contain a tag, which would be part of the billing permit review. Has the town always had a mobile home district, a zone district? The first zoning ordinance was adopted by the town on January 11th, 1982, and included the R-MH mobile home park district. All of the existing maps that we've had, or have on record, do not show any properties in the town that were ever zoned R-MH, but we do have that zone district in the code.
So, can you tell me how those two play together, then? If, if we don't have the R-MH zoning, but we seem to have a district?
No, we don't have, we have a district, it's legal to have a district written up in your zoning ordinance. It just so happens that the town has never zoned any property that way. So, somewhere along the, in the, from the development of the zoning ordinance, basically, the areas where the, Mr. Cuffner, for example, has mobile homes, it was zoned RM, which is multifamily residential. And, but, what was there already were the mobile homes, so therefore, they become, they became legal non-conforming use at the time of zoning. But, what happens in a zone district like that, where you may have such a use, the uses that's permitted are either a single-family or a multifamily house, or, or structure. And so, therefore, they would, if they wanted to, they get rid of mobile homes on the lots and develop a regular housing, such as a single-family, or like a duplex or a multifamily unit that is within the existing and allowed uses in the, in those zone districts, then they can go ahead and do that, you know, by merely going to the billing department and applying for a permit. Now, mobile, multifamilies would require a site plan, however, if they want to do a single-family unit, would require just a plot plan and, and the billing department. Because our rules require that multifamily have a site plan as well, so that would require some review by the Planning Commission and Board. But at any rate, that's, you get the drift of that, is that, you know, they, these were legal non-conforming uses right from the get-go. So, in some ways, they've got several options as property owners with the current zoning that they have. Mobile home is, happens to be legal non-conforming use, that they'd like to replace those and keep that use going, but with an improved unit. And then, the question was, who owns the properties in, in town in the original Superior with existing mobile homes? And the staff did a search of the property records and shows that there's John Cuffner, the Cuffner Trust, Gladys Forshi, Sally and Don Melvin, and the majority of the properties with mobile homes on them are owned by the Cuffner Trust. Okay? So, essentially, then, what is also attached to your staff report is the ordinance itself and the standards which, by which other communities, that chart. There's some sections of the 82 zoning ordinance related to districts and also the particular mobile home district. Our current zoning map, the zoning map from 1997 and the zoning map for 1974, which also shows the area where, in this particular case, where Mr. Cuffner has his, that was zoned residential way back in 74, when, when I think the town had its first zoning ordinance. And on that map, for example, obviously, yellow was residential, but the green was actually agricultural at that time, back in 1974. So, the, obviously, the map was updated in 82, and then the one that you're looking at there in 97, plus our current one, it's about all the same.
There were no revisions in between 74 and?
There in 74, it was zoned residential. However, by the time we get to 82, there was a multifamily R-MH and then RL, okay, residential low density and residential medium density. And, and at that time, the zoning was changed where, in this particular case, the Cuffner lots were zoned R-MH.
Okay. Not R-MH.
You mean RM?
RM, RM.
Just RM.
RM, I'm sorry, RM.
Yep.
Yes, that was, yeah, I'm sorry, RM. So, what I'd like to do is ask Attorney Christine to go over the ordinance itself and what it's actually doing. And then, we can answer any questions that you may have.
Okay.
Ask for any public comment on the, on the issue.
Two code sections come into play with this ordinance, while we're only amending one, two do come into play. The first is, obviously, 1630, 16320, which is a section of your code that provides for the repair or restoration of non-conforming uses. And in that section, it provides that if the cost of the repair or restoration is going to cost more than 50% of the value of the building or structure, then that use, that structure has to come into compliance. With regards to mobile homes, we then look to 162910, which does allow mobile homes in residential districts under certain circumstances. And those certain circumstances have to do with the size of the mobile home, that the mobile home be installed on a permanent engineered foundation, and that it shall have brick, wood, or cosmetically equivalent, make it look more like a single-family house than a mobile home. Compliance with the federal standards, and then compliance with any wind load, snow load rules that the town may have. What some section C of the proposed new ordinance would do is provide that for mobile homes, and that would be the only non-conforming use or structure that's affected. So, for mobile homes, they may come in and be replaced without complying with the requirements of 162910, some paragraphs one through three, which are size, permanent foundation, and then exterior cosmetic look requirements. You would be allowing mobile homes to be replaced and tied down on, tied down rather than placed on a permanent foundation, so long as they meet the federal standards. And as Fred discussed already, all mobile homes, if they meet the standards, will have a tag affixed to each movable part. If it doesn't have that tag, it doesn't, it doesn't comply. Typically, any mobile home built after 19, mid 1976 will have that tag. And if it has that tag, it meets the national standards. So, in the building permit review process, our inspectors will be looking for the tag to make sure that it complies with that provision of the code.
In regards to the tag, is there any kind of ability, let's say you found that it wasn't up to go, to get that tag? Is there any kind of ability to go in and apply for that tag, make some renovations and apply for that tag?
It's my understanding that if the unit was built prior to mid 1976, that as HUD, that actually puts, fixes the tags or certifies. They will not certify a restored unit that was built prior to 1976.
So, it's pretty?
But, you can take your unit that was built later, make some modifications, and they'll come back in and recertify.
Okay. Alright. Anybody, time for questions? You had all the staff's presentation at this time?
Basically, then, what you need to do is to ultimately discuss the ordinance.
Yep.
And then recommend approval to the ORD, DNI, to the Board of Trustees.
Okay.
Or, approval with conditions, you have?
We'll move on to questions for staff, since they're also the applicant. So, anybody have any questions in regards to this ordinance for staff, applicant?
I got a question about the vintage of the trailers that are out there already at this time? Just curious, has that ever been looked at?
I don't think we, we know. However, you might ask the applicant what the vintage is of his mobile homes, the current ones.
Just curious, we're talking 76 here.
Well, we're talking, at this point, there may be mobile homes that exist that are older than 1976.
Could be, right. Or all of them are in compliance, and after 76.
Yeah, I don't, we don't, no, I mean, I don't know that fact. We didn't check that. There, let's see. There, the, yeah, there, the homes that, that were replaced, obviously, that was, those were done in, in the 2000s, almost every one of them, according to a list that I got from Phyllis. The ones that are on this list here on question number two. Yeah, so that's very, you know, that's, that's very recent. But the other existing mobile homes, besides the ones that, that the Cuffners own, I don't know. You might ask them what the vintage, or what the year of manufacture is on most of those. I suspect they're, you know, they've got some age on them.
Yeah. I had a question about the number of trailers in town that are owner occupied, and I never got an answer on that from staff, maybe Mr. Cuffner can answer that. I know yours is owner occupied, but of the 20 others in town, are there any others that are owner occupied?
Step up, go ahead and step up to Mike, George, thank you.
George Cuffner, 10974. Yes, there are other trailers in town that are, that are owner occupying them. Probably, we're the ones that have the rental units in, supposedly was RH zoned, or multiple zoning for that purpose. At present time, we all own all the mobile homes there. But, if we want to pull one off and get rid of it and rent that pad out to another mobile homeowner, we could do that. That's what we're talking about, pulling a mobile home off and improving. Or either my own, personal one, maybe changing it if I felt like doing it. But, the way it is right now, we can't do that. The only other question I had was about that Article 70, after 74 and a tag, and Fred's explained that to me, that all trailers are supposed to have that tag on them after 74 if they're approved by federal government or whatever. So, that's, that's the main thing right there.
How many, how many would you say are owner occupied?
There's over 25 trailers in, in the Town of Superior that I, I've counted, and probably, you know?
Because there's, the ones owned by the Cuffners, there's Gladys Forshi, does she live in one?
She lives in a double white.
Okay.
Modular.
Is it considered, I mean, is it considered to fall under this, or is it considered?
No.
I mean, is it considered permanent?
It's a legally non-conforming use. She's owner occupies it, and she owns the lot and the unit.
Okay. And then, the other, there's another couple named in here that, is that one owner occupied?
My assumption is yes.
Who?
Melvins? Melvin?
They own it.
Okay.
Quite a few.
Are they, they're not here, are they in the same position as you? You're the only one that is making this request, but are they also wanting?
Oh, I got other family members that own trailers, so I'm not just the only one. I got about five brothers or sisters, a couple sisters, mobile homes up there also. I'm not just the only one that owns them. Melvin's on theirs, they bought that and moved that in on that lot quite a while ago.
But are they also wanting this?
It's possible they might want to change it someday. And if, if they, it can be moved off and no one put on there as improvement, but they'd probably do it, or whatever, you know? 30 years, they were new to us then, when we put them on there.
I got additional question. There is requirements in the state that the trailers, new trailers, I know, are to be inspected by state inspectors, are called setters, and they're certified?
Yes.
You got it.
There are provisions in state law that an owner, an owner may replace and install, I think it may be two units in a 12-month period without having to obtain an installer's license, but the installation, yes, you're correct, would be inspected by the state.
Right. Once they're looking for the tags?
Looking for the tags. I think they're also inspecting to make sure that it's, it's tied down on, to a pad that's appropriately sized for that unit.
Yep.
And has appropriate hookups and all that.
Right.
And I think those kick in through the billing department.
Yeah.
Billing department then looks at it, and then if there needs to be a state inspection as well, then the billing department will call for that as part of their review.
It's not a normal inspection process, from my understanding. These certifiers are statewide?
Correct.
They're not locality wise?
Right.
Yeah, and on the state's website, there's a list of certified inspectors.
That's correct.
Fred, one more question for staff, was a variance ever pursued in this instance? Did staff look at that, or just went straight to an ordinance change?
No.
Okay.
That doesn't mean that the staff didn't think that that was an option, but on the other hand, there are things in the variance rules that might mitigate against the hardship for one.
Any other questions to staff? Okay, so at this time, we'll open up to the audience. Anybody has any statements they'd like to make? George is our audience tonight, nothing, George? Okay. Okay. So, this closes the public hearing, and move on to further comment and questions amongst, discussion amongst the Planning Commission here. So, Ian, anything?
It all seems very reasonable to me, so I'm in support of the, the new language.
Well, I, I'm still perplexed a little bit by the whole thing. I still see a lot of what-ifs and wherefores, I can't understand. It took so long to figure out we got a situation like this at this point, but for the most, most part, I'm in favor of the idea, the concept of going forward, so.
Rochelle?
I agree with the revision of the language.
I'm not in favor of this, yet in my opinion, it prolongs nonconformity. It sets a bad precedent for the idea of granting an exception for something that was designed to improve the stock of housing over time. Anyone who bought a house around there knew it was medium density zoning, knew this was a nonconforming use, knew there was a sunset. This changes, this change effectively makes no sunset to a trailer. You, this, you could have trailers there indefinitely, forever, and I don't think that's what medium density zoning was designed for. It was designed to have more affordable housing, that's why you have higher density zoning, and the idea was that eventually trailers would give way to duplexes, triplexes, multifamily housing. This makes that questionable whether it will ever happen, because if you can rent something and get rent income, why would you build something else? There's a big cost to building nicer or permanent housing. So if you set up a situation which Mr. Cuffin described as, yeah, we're just going to let people move new trailers in there, why would you ever want to build expensive, more expensive medium density housing? I just, I think that if, if anything, there should be a variance request made for Mr. Cuffin's situation. I don't see any of the other owners here, so I think an ordinance for potentially one applicant, I think that sets a bad precedent, so I'm not in favor. So Ian?
I do have a question. Was it ever stipulated anywhere that it was to be sunsetted? That we were going to allow mobile homes for any, you know, particular length of time, or were they just...
May I adjust that?
Yeah.
Okay. Mobile homes are allowed in residential districts right now, so long as they meet the size requirement and be placed on a permanent foundation and meet the federal standards. What Mr. Cuffin has been asking is, I don't want to be put, I don't want to put it on a permanent foundation, because that makes it then a permanent structure more similar to a single-family home. That is why in your code right now, you allow mobile homes placed on permanent foundations in residential districts. What your code doesn't allow is for a nonconforming structure such as a mobile home that's on ties, so you pull up and you hook it up, to stay in perpetuity, because eventually it's going to deteriorate to the point where it will be uninhabitable, and then at that point in time, it basically sunsets, because it will need to be replaced, and it'll cost more than 50% of the value of that dilapidated mobile home. So that's, I think, the sunset that Mr. Folsom was referring to. There's, there's no set date for it, that all mobile homes will be replaced by, some municipalities do have those ordinances, unless they come up to a standard where they're put on a permanent foundation. So the sunsetting is the replacement of them, that naturally will occur, because over time, they will become uninhabitable to the point where they will need so much repair or complete replacement that would cost more than 50% of the value.
Is there any evidence that there was ever any true discussion of this particular kind of a proposal in contrast to something split between the cracks? And that we went from, you know, a teeny tiny town in the 70s that had certain things mapped out, and then low and behold, by in the 90s, we're interpreting things quite differently, and so who is to say that there was a sunsetting intention? Because that's what you seem to be saying, and I don't necessarily see anything that intended it one way or the other.
Here's where I think the intent is. The fact that you have no properties, no lots, in an RMH zone, and that's basically what this is creating, is a mobile home park. The ability to drive one in, tie it down, six months later decide you don't want to live in it anymore, drive it out, or, you know, move it out, and then have somebody else come in, tie it down, it's creating that. So I think there was an intent on the part of the town not to have that situation. I also think there was another intent on the part of the town to allow mobile homes, so long as they have a permanent foundation and are more of like a single-family home rather than a mobile home. But as far as discussions way back when, I don't know that anybody is around who would, besides Mr. Cuffin, who would be able to answer that.
Yes, I think, you know, you're not looking at sunsetting trailers completely.
Correct. They're allowed.
They could be there in perpetuity, no matter what we decide. They would change their shape and form, and the way they're tied down, their improvements and their foundation. But there's still, will always be the ability to have a trailer there.
Correct.
Okay, and... But if they deteriorate to the point where they've got to be replaced, they can't be replaced with another one. That's the point of right now. Correct. So what, what you're changing is, you're saying we can put a new, or used one, it's not, this is not even saying you've got to put a new one in there, you're saying you can put another used one in there.
Right.
And so you just, you continue it indefinitely. To some degree, I, not on board with indefinitely, because I think there's economies, there are points in time when, you know, ownership of the lot changes and somebody starts getting together, and it makes sense to build multifamily housing on the properties. So I, not in agreement that this could just keep going and going and going. But by this, it does have the ability to, if that's what happens. So that's, I'm in favor of letting this go at this time. I don't see a great, you know, rehab movement of properties down there. No other owners here from surrounding properties who were notified or had the ability to find out that this was up. Nobody came in and said, no, you can't do this, because I bought my property, you know, as you said, in regards to this not, not changing over to another trailer, or having to upgrade to a different trailer. And there's no outcry saying this shouldn't happen from those surrounding property owners either. Which surprises me. I think if they realize that this could affect, make a mobile home... We don't, we don't know that. They may be happy with the situation too. Any other comments, questions? I think we need to move on to a decision then, if nobody else has any comments. So let's take a vote. Somebody wants to propose it?
You've already closed the public hearing, haven't you?
Yes.
Okay.
Were you supposed to hit a gavel or something?
I did, okay. I just didn't pound it hard enough.
Soft and subtle.
So anybody want to make a motion here?
I move that we, I don't know how, oh gosh, I don't know how formal this has to be.
Mr. in the top section.
Okay, so regarding ordinance of the Board of Trustees amending Section 16-3-20 of the Superior Municipal Code to allow for the replacement of legal, nonconforming mobile homes. Do I have to say a lot more?
You're recommending approval to the Board of Trustees.
I, I'm recommend, I'm recommending approval by the Board of Trustees of the new language as detailed here.
No, I think that's, that's fine. Any seconds? Okay. Seconding. So I think, oh, I guess we have a motion to vote on. Fred, one thing, we talked about earlier when we were talking about how we handle things at the planning commission, we did have discussion on moving certain points, or certain points people made forward to the Board of Trustees, not necessarily just a blanket vote, yea or nay.
Right.
So do you have some points, are you taking some points down from Mr. Folsom so that, so that those, his view gets passed on, I guess is what I want to check.
Well, it would be in the minutes.
Right. Okay.
And only, the points that you want to pass on would have to be part of a motion.
Right. Right. So if you want to try and put anything in the motion?
Well, right now you've got a first and a second, so you can think about.
Okay. So all those in favor of the motion, vote yea? All those in favor? Oh, can't vote. Too late. Okay. All those against? Okay, so we've got four to two.
Okay, so that's passed.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay.
All right, moving on.
Next one.
Okay, moving on to public hearing regarding an ordinance amending Chapter 16 of Superior Municipal Court Code regarding regulations pertaining to areas and activities of state interest. And presentation by staff again?
I have a, I'll just note some publication.
Okay, public notes?
And, well, I'll make a brief presentation on this one, and then I'd like Christine also to go through the actual regulation itself to some degree. This is a little bit, this ordinance gets its basis for development and inclusion if we so choose to put in the land use code, because way back towards the end, I think it's Article 34, there's a section in there called matters of state interest. And quite some time ago, it was called House Bill 1041, one of the few state land use regulations that were ever passed by the legislature was put in place, that local communities have the option to develop rules and regulations over meritors of concern to them that are large, basically large projects, that, that they would like to have local control over. And historically, the Department of Local Affairs has developed some model regs, and so communities can adopt these things that go beyond their land use code if they care to. And we have two subjects that this ordinance is covering. One is some general rules about dealing with matters of state interest, and then two other specific items. One is for large transportation facilities that may impact and affect the community, and the one that you are familiar with that is the issues of intersection or interchange for the Northwest Parkway, or the Jefferson, was it the Jefferson Parkway or the Northwest?
Jefferson's the newest one, yeah.
Yeah. And that's basically out there at, I believe, by Indiana and Blue Collar and Highway 128. And you all had a session about that.
Yeah.
I was not here. But that's the reason for development of regulations, which are fairly detailed. However, for that facility, most of the stuff that's required in our ordinance is going to pop up in their planning documents, is to, like, their environmental impact statements and all that's going to have, they're going to be like this. So anyway, so the town is taking initiative and wanting to have some local control over that. Number one. Number two is an issue related to mineral rights. We have had a person come into the town and say, how do I exercise my mineral rights? I have mineral rights on a piece of property, and so the town basically is feeling that in this particular case, if you have to deal with the town center across the street, we felt that the town needed to have rules in place so that, and applicants, since they would be, if they wanted to do some mining on their mineral rights, they would have to, they would have to obviously disturb the surface, and once you do that, you're, you have to deal with local control. And so there are rules as they, as part of this ordinance, that create a process and some mill requirements that an applicant would need to comply with in order to get approval to begin mining on a piece of property. So that's what's, what these two, those are the two items that are creating these disordinances. And obviously, we're not dealing with other things that are in that list that the state allows you to regulate. We're dealing with, but, well, we are dealing with two of my name list, which is transportation and the development of mineral mining.
Questions?
So that's a summary of it, and I'll, I'll let Christine kind of walk you through the ordinance.
I don't have too much to add to Fred's presentation, but currently in your code at what will be 163410, it recognizes the state's granting of the authority to the town to designate areas of state interest for the following interests, areas. Mineral resource areas, natural hazard areas, areas containing or having significant impact upon historical, natural, or archaeological resources, areas around key facilities in which development may have a material effect upon the key facility or the surrounding community. So those are the areas that may be designated, and the town is going to designate the entire town as in a mineral resource area. The town has a rich history in mineral resources, and it's important to ensure that any future extraction, those, those people wanting to participate in that would have to come to the town and let the town know where you're going through. The standards that this ordinance creates for mineral extraction, I think one of the more important ones is to ensure that it's compatible with the surrounding land uses, so that somebody doesn't come in and, in the middle of a neighborhood, start extracting minerals. The other is designation of an activity of state interest, and that it would be for the site selection and construction of roadways, arterial roadways, highways, interchanges, all the things that we may see with the Jefferson Parkway. As you'll see, the ordinance has a laundry list of things that, reports and maps and studies that must be provided to the town, so that the town won't be left out of the process. That's really what, what these ordinances do. A lot of the things are going to be, a lot of the reports are reports that they're going to be doing already for other agencies, but yet it'll bring some authority and control to the town to be able to approve and review all of them.
So at this time, if anybody has any questions for staff?
I have a question. So the, the text of this ordinance, is it basically off of a template from the state?
It is a combination of a template from the state, I think that the city of Idaho Springs has one, the city of Centennial, Douglas County, so it's a culmination of various, but basically what I found was the majority of them followed pretty closely to the state's recommended ordinance.
What, and how far out from the town does this come into?
Town boundaries.
So it's ju, so it would have to be within the town boundaries?
Correct.
So Jefferson Parkway is...
Possibly will be in the town boundaries.
Possibly will be, okay.
My question is, do these highway authorities, do they not have some ability to kind of trump what people don't want them to do? And that was, my thought is, do they have the ability to say, well, we see your ordinance, but we're the highway authority, we just tend to do what we want with respect to certain things?
No, they would still need to apply with each individual jurisdiction that they, that has rules like this.
Okay.
So you're saying it's binding? It's a binding type agreement, where they would have to, even though they're outside or, or close to our boundaries, they would have to comply or not?
Not if they're close by, if they're within the bound... Not if they're close by, if they're within the boundaries.
Within the boundaries.
So if any piece of, if any piece of a project comes within the boundaries, then we have say on the whole project? Or do we only have say on that piece that comes in our boundary?
The, the nature of what you're requesting would encompass the entire project, but you'd have say with what's in your boundaries.
Right. Right. Okay.
If that makes sense.
And regarding mineral rights, do we have ordinances now that, so anybody could just come in and extract minerals or...
There's really nothing, Fred could probably answer that, but there's really nothing in place.
Well, there's, what is in place is they would, in order to extract minerals on rights that they basically can say they have or improve that, they wouldn't need to disturb the surface. That's a, now we're, we're already at a grading permit issue and that would need a permit. I mean, basically it'd be a grading permit of some sort, you know? So they'd have to come up with the plans for what they were going to do there anyway. Plus, once you start grading, you've got to have erosion and sedimentation control and so on. So there's a, there's a pot of rules there already. But it's not as, put it this way, it's not as extensive of what's being proposed here. There's a little bit, this is quite, quite a bit more complete for them to deal with.
And is the owner of the fee simple of that property required to allow them to extract them in a...
He's required, for example, let's say we're out in a rural area somewhere and it comes into a property owner, I got the mineral rights, basically he couldn't do that without the owner's permission normally. And that just happens, you know, that's, that's been an issue out in the Western school in some, some cases. The other option the property owner has is to work a deal and buy his, buy rights from him and then take that ability away by merely purchasing those rights. And that, that's a, that's a negotiation deal between the property owner and mineral rights holder. If you own property that have federal mineral rights, there's not a hell of a heck of a lot of negotiation that goes on there.
And if the mineral rights are, let's say, under one property, but there's, you know, owner of this property, is there, are there some allowances to go horizontal under?
Well, I assume that can happen, yeah. At that point, he's not disturbing the surface above on the other guy, on the guy's property where the rights are directly below. That's a, that would be some sort of a mining technique that, you know, I don't think the owner of the property would have much to say about that.
And it would impact his existence living on top of that, right?
Could. Go ahead. But on the other hand, he's going to have to have approval from the state to do it also. And so then they're going to, geologists are going to look at how thick is the overburden where they're just mining stuff up underneath it, if it's a solid mining. So to answer your question, we have some rules, but we didn't feel it was enough to deal with this particular issue.
Any other questions, staff? Okay, so at this time, I'd like to open the, open it up to the public if anybody in the audience has anything to say regarding, at this public hearing regarding this ordinance. Okay? Nobody in the audience coming forward? This will close the public hearing? A little louder than that. Okay, so time for us to talk about if anybody has anything they want to bring up, speak up.
What is the request for permit, may I ask, on mineral rights?
The, there are mineral rights on the town center property that are owned by other people.
Yeah.
Those rights are owned by other people, they show up in the dial commitment and so on. One of those mineral rights property owners has claimed that he would like to develop those rights. And how does that have, how can I do that in this town? And I believe the property owners are aware of that. And, I mean, that's basically all I, we know.
Okay. So he hasn't discussed his intentions really, he's just talking about the idea.
He's, has said to one of the staff members, I would like to develop my mineral rights, how can I do that since I own those rights? Well... And at that point, he hasn't come back to, you know, to apparently, I mean, this is just public information, he has not, the staff people have told us, told me anyway, that he has not come back then to follow up on any other questions. But we, as staff, took the proactive approach to deal with this issue in a little bit more comprehensive manner than the way it's set up now. Particularly because it involves a town center property, but it would occur for any other place and someone could say, but that could happen in a town here, we'd have to jump on that pretty quick.
Right.
But from a historical standpoint, as you know, Superior is a coal, coal mine community. And there are chambers underneath this community and no one knows much of it there because there's no subsidence here because the overburden is so thick. And, and when they mine that, particularly around Superior, maybe over at Louisville or wherever, a lot of the miners collapse those chambers once they depleted the coal. And so it's pretty solid, steady under there anyway because of that maneuver. So who knows how far, I mean, I haven't looked at any map, there are some old mining maps, but who knows how far those chambers have gone? And one of the things is they have to prove that the rights are, that there's some value to them.
Okay.
And if there's a hole, you know, or a vacant vault under there, under the town center, several, well, then it doesn't have anything at all. But on the other hand, we don't know that. But there's been no other further contact with the community on that score.
Anything else? Okay. Doesn't seem necessary to take a straw vote or anything, so does anybody want to make a motion?
I recommend, I move to recommend approval of an ordinance amending chapter 16 of the Superior Municipal Court.
I'll second.
Okay. Okay, all those in favor? Announce?
Yep.
All right. So it closes the public hearing. Onto staff announcements and miscellaneous?
We have had, I've talked to Jay and Matt, just briefly, we've had a little bit of activity over on the town center in terms of, basically what it boils down to is, there are discussions, I think, among the property owners and other people who are wishing to either buy or put together the parcels. So there's some, what I would call land acquisition activity and interest over there trying to get something, you know, settled and then get going on, on the project. But, you know, this comes in kind of like waves. I mean, this is a difficult site in terms of ownership and how it's going to be developed. And some of the, one of the owners, like I think Mr. Metcalf is not feeling very well these days. And so there's those kinds of issues that are, that create obstacles to packaging property and all that. But there is some interest there. The Remington Homes is still, I think that they might make a submittal this spring, but we haven't seen anything on, on that one. So that's really all the announcements I had in terms of anything that's kind of out there.
How long do Remington Homes have to exercise the FDP?
Well, they got theirs approved last year, I think they have three years.
Is there anything happening up there by the flatiron, son?
The hotel?
Hotel.
Well, they're out there, but nothing that I've been told is really like happening. And they have said that they want to do that FDP. They want to come in with a proposal for actually, I'd leave a hotel on one of those lots, so, on a lot. So, you know, we would, we were expecting maybe we'd see something sometime this year, but I haven't heard anything concrete about that.
Have we had any communication with the new owners of Marketplace?
I do not know. I assume so, but I do not know that. Can't answer that.
Okay. All right, meeting adjourned.
And Phyllis didn't come, so obviously we didn't have any cookies, so.
Yeah.
I saw that too.
A tough night, good thing I had some dinner.